County Planning Commission, and I will begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cell phones are turned off. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on the www minnehaha county.org site for viewing by the general public. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless the written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the Planning Office by Tuesday, July 6th at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, July 20th, 2021, at or after 9:00 AM. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date. Meetings of the County Commission are held in this same room. First on the agenda is public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? At this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are perceived to be non-controversial and meet all of the requirements of the codes and regulations. The consent agenda will be acted on in one motion with no public hearing on the items unless a member of the public, the commission, or staff requests that item be removed from the consent agenda. The minutes for the May 24th meeting are included in the consent agenda. Does any Planning Commission member wish to have an item removed for discussion? Next, I will read each item on the consent agenda and ask if there are any issues or comments from the staff or the audience. If any member of the staff or the audience would like to be heard on any item, please raise your hand and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Any items remaining on the consent agenda will be approved by the Planning Commission with the conditions recommended by staff. And then if your item was approved as part of the consent agenda, you'll be free to The first item is approval of the minutes of May 24th, 2021. Item number two is conditional use permit 21-45 to allow a manufactured home on the property legally described as the north half, the southeast quarter. There is an exception of Track 1, and then there's and Track 3 in the southeast quarter, Section 18, Township 103 North, Range 49 West. The petitioner is John Weedy. He is also the property owner. That's approximately two miles south of Baltic. Item number three is conditional use permit 21-46 to adaptively reuse the dwelling on the property legally described as the west half, the northeast quarter, all in Section 31, Township 104 North, Range 48 West. Petitioner is Travis Jurvik. Property owner is Amelia Kringan. That's approximately four miles east of Baltic. Item number four, conditional use permit 21-47 to make available two building eligibilities on the southeast quarter, the southeast quarter, Section 22, Township 103 North, Range 50 West. Petitioner is Scott Swanson. He's also the property owner. It's about two miles north of Crooks. Item number five, conditional use permit 21-48 to transfer one building eligibility from Track 4, Jandal Second Edition, to Track 1, Jandal Second Edition, in the east half, Section 32, Township 104 North, Range 52 West. Petitioner is Tetonka LLP. They're also the property owner, eight miles west of Colton. Item number six, conditional use permit 21-49 to exceed 3,600 square feet of accessory building space requesting 4,260 square feet on the property legally described as Track 1, Ace Edition, in the southwest quarter, northwest quarter, Section 22, Township 101 North, Range 51 West. Petitioner is Brian Schmidt. He's the property owner. That's located approximately five miles south of Hartford. Item number seven is conditional use permit 21-50.
That's a regular agenda.
Pardon me?
That's a regular agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I guess I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion and second to approve the items on the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. If your item has been approved, you are free to go. Move on to the regular agenda. We have item number seven, conditional use permit 21-50 to allow a bed and breakfast establishment inside an existing shop building on the property legally described as County Auditor's Track 2 in the southeast quarter, and there's an exception of the north 200 feet, Section 33, Township 102 North, Range 47 West. Petitioners Argel and Eugene Hunter. They're also the property owners. It's north of Valley Springs. Kevin?
Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. Might just bring this up right away here. The petitioner has submitted a new site plan or revised site plan, so I'll just give it to you here quick. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. As was described, this petitioner is to allow a bed and breakfast establishment on this property. The petitioner is requesting to utilize an existing accessory building for short-term rentals, such as what is done through the website Airbnb. The plan was to convert a portion of the shed, the accessory building, and this is the old plan. You have the newer updated plan in your hand into this Airbnb more livable space. It's currently an office space. Staff from the beginning has had concern about the building becoming a second dwelling on the property, being that it's an accessory building and being that the use of an Airbnb is a quasi-residential nature of the building use. We were recommending very specific conditions for the proposed use, oftentimes that we require for say if a office building is built, such as no kitchen can be an accessory building because that would make it a dwelling. If you read through the staff report, you'll see that staff had concerns about the flood plane, and I have some photos of the flood, the most recent flood in the PowerPoint here. But the building was constructed with a flood plane development permit. We did find that, and it is adequately raised or above the base flood elevation. So that part has been resolved. But since staff wrote the staff report, we received a letter from the neighbors that they received from the petitioner that describes the use of the Airbnb differently from what was described in the narrative for the application. The new, or the letter describes the use to be used for family, to stay there over the summertime or extended times throughout the year and not necessarily being used as a Airbnb where it's advertised to the general public. And with that concern being that this might be a backdoor to another building eligibility request on a property that does not have the building eligibilities, staff is changing their, I'll be changing the recommendation from the deferral because of flood plane issues to a denial because of the proposed use. I do have some photos here. I can go through some of them. So this is looking kind of up the road at the primary house there. This is looking to the west. You'll see there's, in the right of way there, there's the sign for historical marker. You can see the highway going south. This house is kind of at an intersection here, so the roads are very prominent nearby. And then this is looking the other direction of the road, and this would be the accessory building that the Airbnb would be in. The proposed use is actually would be on the backside of this building, since you can see there's the garage door right in the front and the camper parked in the driveway. And that was kind of a parking pad with some stuff on the side of the building. There is the flood plane. One of the neighbors submitted some flood pictures from a couple of years ago when there was lots of flooding. The house flooded, the yard flooded, and you'll see in this photo that the garage appears not to have flooded, so that was adequately raised. And then this was another photo submitted by the neighbor about that people have been camping on site and campers on the property, and that was one of the concerns raised by the neighbor. So with that in mind, I'll bring us back to the site plan, right there, or the building plan. And I am available for any other questions, but it looks like most, everybody here from this point on should be here for this item, I would think, so we can proceed with this. Is there any questions?
Any questions for him? Jeff?
Kevin, is that at the corner of 103 and 146?
I can't recall the exact highway numbers, but it's right north of Valley Springs, the very northern border. So right across the street is actually Valley Springs city limits.
Oh, okay. So it's 109, is it, or 105?
It looks like it's 138 is the highway.
Right.
And 487th Avenue.
Got it. Got it?
Any other questions for him? Is the petitioner here? Will you please come forward and state your name and address?
Thank you for your time. My name is Argel Hunter, and I live at this address, 48628257th Street in Valley Springs, or 26191. We lived in Garrettson before. The letter that you have, I think Kevin gave that to you, and it was my intention to send it to you, but Kevin, the other Kevin, our neighbor, took care of that for me, so I appreciate that, Kevin, that you sent that. As this explains, it was never intended to be an underhanded deal or a secret, if you will, way to get by. I intend to tell you here on this night what our plan was. And have you all read the letter? Has everyone read the letter? Okay, this is my husband back here. And as the letter states, he has dementia, and it's, thank God, slow progression, but we're at a spot where we need to do something. So the camper that Kevin is talking about is our son and his family living there because there's no room in the house. So our plan was to have living quarters there, and we would be there part of the time, but not all the time, and also to have it be an Airbnb when we're not there. I talked at length with Kevin about that, and I asked him, do you think this is a waste of time? And he didn't say no. He didn't say yes. He just said, you should come. So I guess I'm asking you to look at the zoning and take into consideration the circumstances. And I understand you are going by the law. I understand that. And I'm not trying to change the law, but I am asking you to make an exception in this situation. And we will hope to continue to go south in the winter, so we won't be there. And in the summertime, like now, we often go to friends and relatives and whatnot. But yes, we will be there part of the time. And the rest of the time, my son and his family, we're planning to do the Airbnb part. That's not, that's not a lie. I did not want to mislead anybody. Do you have questions for me?
Not yet.
Hmm?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet?
Okay. May I ask you to come back, ma'am?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Doug.
How long have you owned that property there?
Two years.
Two years.
Okay.
We moved from Garrettson, living out in the country in 11 acres. We wanted to build another house for our kids. But no, we couldn't do that. Why? Because the farmers, they had to have this stupid. Excuse me, I want to stop right now.
That's a good idea.
I want to talk.
Chair, we need to use the microphone.
Sir, you're going to have to come, someone else couldn't understand you. If he wants to speak, he can come forward.
I understand that.
If you want him to, I guess.
Well, part of, part of the dementia that he has is emotions become very.
Yes.
I used to work on farms. How many of you are farmers? You're farmers? How many kids do you have? I mean, did you have children grow up and then they wanted to be farmers? And then did they build a house next to your house? Did they? Can anybody answer that? That's where I came from. I came from a county that let the families live together. Does that make sense? No, it don't make sense. We moved, the only reason we left Garrettson was because our house burned down, and we couldn't, we could not pay the taxes. Isn't that something? You know what? If we would have built another house right there, why do you think the taxes would have been? Where would the money go to? You guys? No. There wouldn't have been any taxes. Wasn't that great? And you guys are always looking for taxes. You're going to raise it.
That's enough.
It's not enough. I've got more to do.
You're not helping.
I don't care what these guys, they're farmers. I'm a farmer.
Please.
And I'm telling you right now, we live in two acres. In two acres, I can put at least 10 sheds in there, and I can, if with, if I get your guys' opinion, I could fill those sheds full of pigs. And then I'm getting money off these pigs, and then I can put another shed in there, and I could put some cattle in there on these two acres. And here, I'm taking care of this cattle, and I'm taking care of these pigs. And then I get another shed, and I'll put some more animals in there. But you know what? If I want to put my son in a house, I can't do it! Stupidness.
Let's move on. Is there anyone else that would care to speak to this item?
Yeah, I will first.
You please state your name and address, please.
Kevin Serovi, it's 2687487th Avenue, Valley Springs. I'm right next to these guys. That's my house right there in the next section up off the red.
To the top of the.
Can you?
Which one, the top or across the street?
The top, right. You can actually see the house right at the top of the, the other, where the red ends and the. We, first of all, I'm not really concerned about the flood plane, but just to tell you a little bit more about that, I am kind of concerned about it because I've been there 35 years at my place. I've seen it flood three times. And the last time Mark Moore owned it, and actually he left town, and we actually had to take care of through the flood, it actually pushed the floor up in that building. It's cracked. Go on and look at it. I know Mark because I was in it. Okay? So the water did wash that trailer off the side. That water did come up to that edge across that. The water was just down at that point. So the water was up to that building at one time. Where it's in a flood plain, to me, doesn't really matter, because I know I was there the day to help Mark out when he was up in Watertown, trying to help him through this flood. He had left town because he was so depressed, and the next day it actually flooded worse than it was the first day. But, you know, whatever, that doesn't really matter. But that floor is pushed up, and there's a crack in it because of that pressure from that water blowing that building up. Just there, that's what I want to say about that. As far as, I guess, the building permit thing goes, I mean, there's, like you said, there's regulations and laws for the reason that they don't have building, what's the word I want to use here?
Eligibility.
Eligibilities, you know? And there's not one here. And, you know, as bad as I feel for what the medical thing for this type of deal, I actually have some experience with that with my in-laws that did the same thing. They had to sell their house and went to a home because of the same type of a medical situation. So I mean, I feel sorry, bad about that, but, you know, that still doesn't mean that they can throw seven more people in a six, we got six people that are now to live there, if you take the couples, two, four, seven. And some of them are going to actually double the capacity, actually, of the people there that are going to be around there. You know, that's, I guess, one of my things. I'm sure there's more, but it just comes down to that, I guess, that, I guess I'm a little bit confused about the bed and breakfast thing, you know, as far as whether it was going to be used for residential, for his children, or what it was going to be used for. And I guess nothing really changed. They sent the letter out, and the letter is what it is, you know? I mean, I kind of knew that that's what we were doing. I talked to Kevin before the letter came out and told him that's what they're trying to do. And then the letter came out, and boom, it came out. And then they didn't even tell, they didn't even send the letter. I sent the letter in about three or four days because he didn't know what I was talking about, because you guys didn't have the information on the actual, whatever, the main permit, you know, the main, that he sent to us, so nobody knew really what was going on. So that's why I sent the thing out, wasn't trying to be a, I was just trying to get everybody informed about what they were saying and what, you know, what was actually going on. I just don't, I guess, you know, if it goes back to the same thing, you know, if they can do it, then why can't I do a building just like that, a 40 by 60 sitting right there? That if you're going to allow them to put a building permit on that one, or a building eligibility on that one, then why can't I turn my 40 by 60 sitting right there into the same thing? And that just gives me more value on my property, you know? I mean, the same difference. It's the same, if you can't do it for them, you won't do it for me. They, you know, I guess that's just the way I look at that, you know? It just adds more to the property. The other thing is, I had one other question, is if that does go through, I mean, you know, if you could do this, what they're talking about doing, or anybody else could do it, and I'm not even saying these guys, does that go to the next owner? Do they have to go get a conditional use permit? If they sold the place, would they have to go and get another, new owners get a conditional use permit to use that building again, or would that just follow with the property? I guess, once you guys register, I think that's what I'm trying to understand here, is once you registered as a bed and breakfast, and it's, you know, you give them pretty much what it amounts to in eligibility, does that go to the new owner if they sell the property?
It's just like we did with the dog thing. It's how you write it in the conditions. So it can be added in there, that it is not transferable.
That's where I'm looking.
It's up to the Planning Commission how they would like to handle that.
Either way, you could appeal to the full commission.
Yeah.
Any decision that we make here.
But I'm just saying, it should be pretty much be, I mean, it's, I don't know how you could possibly not say that they were going to try to use it for another building or another housing eligibility thing, you know? I just, that's where I'm at, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak to this item?
Yes, I would too. I'm Suzanne Serovi. I'm his wife. I live at the 26187487th Avenue, next to the property. You all see that. I'm not sure if you need me to speak or not, but I'll do it. I'm here. You'd asked how long they'd lived there, right? A couple of years. We've been there for, as Kevin said, over 30 years, so we've been there a really long time. I'm certainly saddened, you know, given Gene's illness. These guys are nice people. I really like our Gene. Having said that, though, I am opposed to the request. I'm sure you gathered that. It just doesn't seem to be anything but violating the ordinance that's there for the, that the planning staff mentioned, or, you know, restrict the density. And we know that's all for good reason. Acreages, there's only so many building eligibilities per section, right? So we know the reasons for that, and I understand, again, Gene wanting to have the family there, but those building eligibilities are going to be negated if we allow an exception in this case. And anybody within a building, a garage or whatnot, sounds like we're opening the door for that if we let that go through. So poof, you know, you've got another residence on how many other acres, acreages, excuse me, out there. It's a single-family property. It should stay that way. There's other housing options. We've got, you know, homes for sale, apartments for rent in Valley Springs. They've got new development with homes that could be built. Brandon's not that far away, 10 minutes away, 10 minutes away from Valley. So that's very close. Seems like there's options. A lot of families have medical issues they come up against, age-related. As my husband also said, we've got that with my parents. Due to medical issues, they did have to give up their house and go move to assisted living facility. You know, we've got a lot of those in town. We know that happens. Again, so I, you know, I understand Gene and RG's situation, but again, the ordinance, I just fall back on that, that it shouldn't be overlooked to allow a second residence on that property. It's not what it was supposed to be, single family. And that would be helping them becomes unfair to the rest of us that live in that neighborhood, the other neighbors as well as myself. And that whole precedence that was mentioned in the, I think, the staff planning minutes ahead of this. So that's just what, honestly, I'm thinking the permit should be denied, as I guess was recommended, but if you guys go on to be considering it for approval, if, then, you know, concerns with some of the things that were mentioned. One particular was the maximum of two weeks stay for any guest. It's a great idea. I think there should be conditions, but how the heck would that be monitored? How the heck would that be put into real use two weeks out of a month? On the honor system, not saying they're not honorable, but the honor system doesn't seem like that could work. That leaves it up to what? The neighbors to keep track of if people are staying there longer than two weeks out of the month? And then what's the recourse? What, call up planning and say it's happening? One of the things I heard Scott say, he's got to come out and verify that that's happening? How do you do that? You know, complaints if that exceed that two-week limit. That just, again, yeah, we'd have to have conditions if you guys are going to approve it, but I think there would have to be more substance to that one to make it work. I'd say somehow figure out a way to do that, but there would have to be more to it. And then other conditions of use, I'm not sure I have what maybe should be a whole list here, but we should, if, again, if you all are looking to approve it, other conditions that if you were having a real Airbnb or real renting out, what things you would not allow folks to do. So it's not just a place where you can come out and be wild and do whatever out there on the property, right? You wouldn't allow guests to do certain things, and same thing, we should have conditions of use for those too. There's been multiple times we've had, you know, them shooting firearms, the family members. I don't think you would allow that if you I don't think you would allow that if you were a real, really renting it out and so forth, so things like that, firearms, maybe fireworks, running motorized vehicles over, you wouldn't let guests do that on a, you know, two and a half acre property, et cetera, so maybe even a whole row of trees to shield the property, you know, not saying six-inch or 12-inch trees that take 20 years to build up. I would expect something, you know, eight, six, eight foot tall, to be planted and maintained, not just left to die. And I, I, just one last thing, just give me one more minute here. I hate to get into the flood plain aspect, but it's been mentioned a couple times, so I really think it just needs to be said one more time. The reality is that that property does flood. You saw the couple pictures, and Kevin mentioned the accessory building. He didn't go into how far it really does flood. I mean, that does get flooded, it isn't just the floor getting some push-up, inches of water within the building, that's happened. If we had to, we could have the private property owner, we, we've seen it, the neighbors who were also supporting during that flood, experienced it, saw it as well in that building. It's just, it's, the surrounding area definitely floods, the lots, the, not just the basement, not just the main floor of the house, but the building as well, and you guys don't get a sense for really that flooding. There's a few videos out there that, that show it, there's drone footage out there, et cetera. You just don't quite get the sense until you see how massive that water is rushing through there. It's not like the falls at all, but when you really can see the video, you see how the flooding is, and so I just don't want you to overlook that aspect too, even though it sounds like planning staff doesn't feel that's in the flood plain, but the flooding, I think, is still a consideration you guys should maybe take into account again if you're really considering approving it as a, as a dwelling. I do, I think that would have to be consideration. Anyway, I really think you all should deny this permit. I want to thank you for your time. Thanks for letting me have the chance to speak, and again, thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't think there's anyone else here that is here to speak for this item?
Ma'am Chair, I have a question for Scott.
Okay.
Scott, what's the story on the flood plain? Where is this flood plain?
Well, I think we need to keep into mind that there, there are different types of flood. There are 100-year floods, and that's what we regulate. So while this property, that building, did get a flood plain development permit, and we elevated it to the 100-year flood plain, we don't know at what level these past floods have occurred. It might be significantly more than a 100-year flood plain, and that's why you have water. But it, we use best engineering data to, to set a base flood elevation, and we required that new building to be built at or above that base flood elevation of a 100-year flood. Now, maybe that was a 150-year event or a 200-year event, and you can get multiple 200-year events in five or six years. It just, it's a variable thing. So it's best engineering at 100, a 100-year event, so maybe that was more than...
And so they got a permit to build in the flood plain with this modification?
They got a permit to, they got a permit to build that building in the flood plain, they got a flood plain development permit, the previous owner, I think Kevin said it was in 2005?
2006.
2006, they had, the, a previous owner obtained a flood plain development permit and, and provided information that it was built at or above the 100-year flood plain. And that's best engineering that we had at the time.
Dirk Johnson is the man that built the building, and he said you can call him if you want. It's above the...
Ma'am, ma'am, you'll have to come to the podium if you, if you want to speak.
This is all recorded for broadcast, you know?
Okay. It is above the flood plain. I don't know, what is the issue if it's above the flood plain? I don't get that part. There's enough, the building, Dirk Johnson, we had him come, and he looked at it, he said there's, there should be no problem, it's above the flood plain. We do not have wild parties. Our son shot his 22 at some rabbits. You don't believe that?
No, 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 no.
You weren't there, you're just hearing things.
Ma'am, let's move on, please.
Well, it's above the flood plain.
He was shooting at a target. If you look at that, there's the, the farmer is this high above our ground, and he was shooting into that target like that. And now she came over and said, when are you going to quit shooting that? Because my dogs are getting scared.
And we stopped immediately.
Yes.
Good neighbors communicate, I think, so I don't understand any of this, why there's the big roughup about the, the flood plain.
He needs to sit down.
We, we do considerations.
I'm going to sit down, get out of my ass!
That is my...
Sir, you may have to leave the room.
This is an argument. I don't want to have an argument.
Do you see what, I need help? I want to, oh, never mind, just for...
I think it's time for us to move forward.
Ma'am Chair, this is, we can't continue under these conditions. I think that we should defer this item and have the sheriff present the next time we address it.
Any other comments, any other commissioners?
I would be happy to deny it at this point also, but I, I think...
I think we need to move on, Jeff. I, I think rather than have him come back into the room again, okay? Do I have a motion, Jeff?
I'll make a motion to deny this.
Okay.
I'll second that.
And, and I just, while I, I empathize with the challenges that they are facing, I would think we have ordinances for a reason, and they are guidelines, and I would think that any money spent to remodel the building might be better spent, I don't know, now I'm getting off track, so I guess I, but it doesn't fall within our ordinances and our guidelines, and I would, I would move, I will move for, for denial.
Okay, I do have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of the denial?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven has been denied. Any other old business?
Nope.
New business?
Nope.
All, entertaining, motion adjourned.
adjourned.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are done for tonight.
Holy smokes.